... It's exactly the over conflicts of interest that the parents six conflict. So there are respects to be refined, just by the name, I don't come for this whole missionary with respect between spirit and conflict for the parents. Six conflict. But any further questions?
Yes, please. And then, Father, I want to thank you for this glorious day that you've given us. And, Father, you've heard some concerns, Father, that we just live there, you and speciality, each and everyone in our county, and, Father, that our suffering is stressful disease. And, Father, we just pray that you just continue just to watch over them and their families, and just continue just to give them things inside. Father, we ask that you just give us the words and the knowledge to be able to do our job for you. And, Father, we just thank you again for everything that you do for us. And, Father, all this thing you ask of me, the precious Holy Saint, you just got me.
What it means to defy about the respects of America and to repudiate all these respects, one nation by my God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to try to do that again. This is how money can approach the damn athletes. Question. Second. I'm up. The first one is the manager's report. Office A, nine square feet, office three, office seven, office six. Yeah, I'll say. Say.
All right, good evening, Commissioners and Grand County. I'll go ahead and give the manager's report. You should have a packet in front of you with my report on top of it, or a few items that's under that as well, which will be references to some of the items that you see here. Update on the elementary school gym, as you know, it's looking through the design phase and the school put out an RFP, and only one bidder provided a proposal, that was Western Builders, who was also doing the addition over at the school. That amount came in at forty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars, and the school board, in my understanding, honestly, unanimously accepted and awarded that amount. They currently are waiting for delivery time materials, a week time to see when they can start supposedly, and estimate it into October. And the total time for their work is like ten to fourteen days for that steelwork and securing the brick walls on both sides of the facility, and then another week or so, ten to fourteen days to fix the floor, reinstall the features, get the gym back. So roughly, it's all through actually about thirty-four to five days right now. There's not a set start date because that, they don't know when they're going to get all the materials, just like everything else that's going on right now with material. We're all in the vendor issue. Once that project does reach start phase, I'll move it over to the project manager's report, and we'll start tracking as such. If there's any other questions on that, I'll move on to item number two is the new sanitation department. Twenty-twenty-one, Matt, trash truck. As you know, from the last issue's meeting, we wanted to approach the company letting know if we'd be satisfied with the service, and we would be issuing a letter. We let them know that. Pretty hard gap work, pretty hard, I worked them over pretty good, letting them know it's unsatisfactory, what kind of service we're getting, the truck should have sat before. Upon getting that phone call, they started asking for parts off of the line, wherever they were, you know, building another vehicle, just because a part was on back order from a vendor that's building the part, doesn't mean somebody somewhere put a truck together didn't have it sitting on line waiting to go in a truck. So they sent the part, we see him, supposedly programmed it, got it out to us within a few days of that phone call, and we began to have problems with the packer mostly. The truck itself, which is good news, for the most part, the truck itself was working fine, it was our problems with the bed, which basically renders it useless if we can't pack the trash that we leave. And again, once again, let them know our displeasure. And upon reaching the final agreement with them coming, getting the truck, we made them send technicians out to work on. Upon finding out that we're going to have to come get it again, we let them know that that was unsatisfactory, and I provided our attorney, Mr. Coward, the information that he requested at the last meeting, and he could speak to it, he may or may not have already drafted a letter, but wanted to look at the letter prior to issuing it to them, in the hopes that we can get the letter out, and they can let us know by the end of the week whether they're going to be able to get our truck fixed or not.
I got, I got the letter started, I hadn't finished it, it was ready to come in the sack a little bit. I got a few questions about, I'll probably call your department.
Yes, sir. Okay. Great. That will be, we're actually talking to the owner now of the facility instead of sales and service, so we'll be approaching that. And then now, try to get some, some way forward, maybe made old when it comes to this truck. I'll keep the board abreast of what happens. Obviously, anything that happens between now and the next Commissioners' meeting, I'll provide an email and phone call for responding. Hopefully, everything will be done a long time before. If there were any more questions on item two, I'll move on. Item three. This is just a little bit of information provided about the landfill, a total land collective, that's the information I provided about the wells. Again, this is just access to the four services property. I provided them the signed access letter, and as you can see, NESCO, as we said, is that what they're working on is budget estimates. They'll provide us with these numbers before we go forward with the actual wells. Right now, we're working on meeting with NESCO and the four services that want to actually get an exact point where they want to put them off this first monitoring well, and go over any logistics that may be involved. So that's basically, basically the update right there, item number three, where we are currently waiting on dates to be set to meet that, everybody being inside. I request that we just keep, keep us informed on what's happening with that, so that we know what the cost might be that's going to be incurred, plus when it's going to start. Questions on item three? Move on to item four. I provided him, he'd be an email through our attorney, he could answer some questions that you may have on the seventy-six station fuel monitoring wells. Martin Slavel, Geoscience's PA, has been given the green light to proceed with replacement of two monitoring wells. I will obviously provide that date exactly. Also, we make sure that he was aware to let us know the costs, we want to know before any costs are incurred, higher than what I provided you, like that's seventy-six hundred level, which is about thirty-eight hundred, thirty, three hundred and thirty dollars per well, if that, if there's any going to be any costs per well than that, I would make you aware of that. I got the answer from our attorney that ordered a question the last time, as to who will I want? If you don't have any questions for me or Mr. Coward, we'll move on to some additional information in item number five. I know the Commissioner Wiggintin requested some information on our student training that we'd like to incorporate with our IT departments, an interactive administrative IT department. And the ESI Company, which is a nationally known company, I sent you guys links to their information and references, it provides what's called EJ4, is a great old nationwide company that provides interactive e-learning training now regarding your sister state stability and security. They have a large catalog to choose from, that is customizable with monthly course updates and new courses added automatically, which is why we feel EJ4 is learned as, we have the learning content award, is a world winning company, we'd like to work with them going forward to keep our security safe, but also provides a human resource information. I did speak to two other municipalities, I spoke to a lady that was HR in Hawaii, they really feel like this was one of the best content provider companies that they've worked with, because of the way their content is made, it's easy to access, it's not hour or too long, which is what you find in a lot of other content providers with their training. Your employees can do the training and then go on to the work that they're doing. It's an easy way for us to track across the board. We can, we can also add in, like I had said previously, there's safety modules that we can do to prepare our people, and cyber, make them cyber aware, new functions continues to be updated as on a monthly basis. And I talked to another municipality, Kansas City, and they was, and they concur with, it's a good, it's a good feature, a great software, great company, they have tech support, which is obviously a good thing, and they, again, like the way that each module works for testing, providing information, and actually the way it works with their software and their computer systems, it's pretty much, very much a program that they like to work with. So we've got high marks on it, and this is, this is kind of wanted to bring into the board's attention, this is kind of how we would like to move forward with training, our, keeping our systems clear and training our employees safe.
How does, how can you monitor those employees, make sure that they're actually viewed?
You have to log into the system. So each person will be assigned a specific, you know, content or training they'll have to complete. They'll have to go into the software, the actual software to do the training. It monitors how long they're in it, how long it takes, they'll have time, there are timed events, and it'll, it'll actually, most of them will be taking a test, so you'll have to pass the test, they'll, if they don't pass it, they'll have to go back and begin yelling and do it again. It's all within the system, it tells when they've done it, when it's complete, and it's easy to track on time of order. Not everybody will get all the same trainings, obviously, there's training for department heads working with, as you probably are working as leaders of department head, out to conflict, working and that sort of thing, there's always, so there'll be different people that'll be assigned different training as we see it going forward. But certainly, everybody across the board accessing a county information system will need to pass at least the IA awareness, which is, it talks about PII, protection of PII. We want to request how to avoid opening spam or phishing attempts and that sort of thing. And so, as we see more and more of these cyber problems out in the world, we want to be able to at least make it possible for us to protect ourselves a little bit better. And this certainly, as a, as a starting, obviously, it's a starting platform for us, this is a good place to start, there's a lot of access and different catalog content that we can use and access.
I actually went into some of this, this kind of, it's kind of based on, similar to the program we have, the only thing, I didn't see anything right, certain categories, there's certain individual fulfillment, this is kind of, in this particular module I seen was, it was kind of open to everybody. We kind of have some, it's kind of scheduled for certain individuals that they can have access to, then certain people can have access to all of them. And in terms of, what I did was, I set it up for our facility managers to be able to set up who they would like to see in a managed total category, but then also down the line, that way they can submit the names and stuff, and we would allow them to go and do the training, like you say, we go do the tests, and that way it gives a tracking thing to kind of make sure that the training is done. And it's, it is a good thing, but being to have the potential of people abusing it is one of the second big obstacles.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's what we're hoping to control, and Ms. Scarlett and I talked about several times also in our IT department, you can assign or send, like you said, each individual what they're supposed to be able to do, they won't have access to the whole catalog. They'll only have access to what we think they need to do. You know, you'll have some of your ranking file workers that won't necessarily need that leadership course, they won't be in there doing that, and they'll only have, and again, it may start off with two, and then we'll see that there's other things that we can maybe assign later in the year and give them to more. So we certainly want to do the IA protection first, our information with our systems, start there. Safety is huge, safety can be done by everybody. Everybody would have to be required to do some sort of a minimal safety course, and then there's several other things. But I think it's very similar, from what I'm understanding, how, I haven't had a chance, and we won't really have a chance to learn as much about it until we get into it, but it does seem to be very user friendly, and I got very good, I didn't, of the two municipalities that I talked to, I had no negative comments whatsoever, to be quite honest with that. So that was certainly encouraging on this end, to start with, to get a start. We got a three-year, we're looking at it as only number one year, which we can still do, if we get into it and we think there's something else that out there that's better, we can stop it, pretty much at any time. But we got a three-year price because we thought we could use it, build off of it for three years, and it brought that, I was obviously down into my, my area of being able to prove, I wanted to be sure the board understood, or know what we were trying to do as a department, supposed to be training for our employees.
One of the, one of the things that I, excuse me, in our program is under my certification, is going to make, I can take and use that, and then I can, without having to go again, use the certification, I can take, for this model, I can use that model, and send the certification, what I'm receiving to them, then I don't have to go to somewhere else to do my concrete, that's right. It's basically, and that's the new laws and stuff, it's different, they can change, especially in the insurance.
Well, also, we're seeing credits for our insurance as well.
Yeah.
Every time we do a safety, it'll give us credit toward our ACAs.
We need to, you know.
It's five thousand dollars for three years. Worth of offer. We got that.
We did, we, we always build into the budget, it was some money on fully training in the center, so we're good with that, and just the fact that the solder and the safety itself, it'll pay for itself in space, I think.
Mostly, we don't pay the ransom.
Well, you know, we never, we wouldn't pay the ransom.
Yeah.
Thankfully, it was a standalone computer, but we lost that computer auto with the data on it, so we, that's five years ago, and there are way more speakers today than there were then, so this is, to me, this is a good investment on every level, and it'll help me on continues, developing new employees, she can, you know, sign certain laws for training, as, you know, as their department manager can for her specific area.
Expecting drowning.
Yeah.
There's a lot of information in there, people, I don't know if it exists, all the first two were created, we just can't, we just can't, we don't have much of a program, he's very open to it.
All right, moving on to the last item I have is, this was actually just brought to my attention, and I think it's, it's something that we all are trying to do, I've actually asked Ms. Booth and the seller at the Health Marketing, kind of come, let's figure out ways and ideas to try to get our, our citizens vaccinated. So they brought this initiative they put together, funding support for community-led vaccine, and it's called, they have, let's see, Take One For The Team. It's an initiative, brainstorming ideas initiative to try to get people to go out and get the vaccine, and it basically boils down to trying to get, as you see the piece of paper that I have there, trying to get as many people vaccinated, and we're looking at trying to initiate about a thousand additional Grand County residents to get vaccinated. What it boils down to is coming up with ideas and making an incentive to help the community. So fifty dollars will go to a kids' activity for each individual that gets a vaccine, we will put into our sports athletics, our activities for the county and the schools. Football or a band, doesn't have to be sports, wrestling or the STEM club, some of the educational services that we provide. This is kind of what, working with Sophia, Angie, and the schools, they're looking at what this could potentially cost, you can see as a total cost item, and then it's a matter of cost share, so wanted to see if the board, what the board would be willing to, if they would be willing to, if we can get an idea of what it would cost, if they would be willing to put some money, five thousand, ten thousand dollars towards this incentive to get our vaccine citizens vaccinated in the county.
It was the funding.
It's basically going to be towards the county. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's basically going to be through the county, and I think, Ms. Scarlett, I think Sophia was talking about, they were handling through the, the Health Department of School, right?
I thought she was saying the Dogwood Trust.
They were involved, Dogwood Trust is part of that.
Yeah.
And then she would make, yeah.
Yes, we would recruit as a part.
It's not that.
That was Chris.
Yeah.
That's what I.
Yeah. Let me get a little more information.
And, you know, if there was any match, it's filed under the Rescue Act.
Yeah.
Um, for, so if, if there was any match, I would hear us, Rescue Act would provide the business funding, it would not be locals all or something.
So the incentive is that you choose, still like maybe, you have paid a dollar.
Yeah, for each person that will go get vaccinated, that fifty dollars goes towards whatever that person chooses that activity.
So what I could do is ask me, and I could say, well, my folks.
Yeah, go towards the football and.
I can get paid.
No, it's not.
What is giving money back to?
Yeah, it's giving it back to our kid that uses it and what they need in the county, what they could use. Certainly a useful, the money is going to be used for, for county citizens for sure. I'm, like I said, we've been working our tails off to try to come up with issues and ideas, try to encourage people to get vaccine, vaccines and get vaccinated, try to help out, because we are such a rural area, and it's, it's hard on us in the medical field, the medical side, patient side, handler services, hospital beds, ERs, it's, it's making it tough. And we, as we've talked earlier, the special meeting or the workshop meeting, we don't know if we're going to get a, a variant coming through all of that, so we just be there.
So we're trying to encourage, just as a way to try to encourage vaccinations.
We need to know, I think, if it's going, maybe a little, a little, you know, how old do we have?
It's just one two grand.
It's, it's both of them.
Man, they got some no prayer.
You want me to find out for sure, or just give you an email or follow each one of you?
If you could go around.
Okay, all right, we'll do that. All right. So move on to the project manager's report. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we're, we're getting pretty, pretty hard on project, projects for the county. First, our first project is the Moose Branch subdivision. We conducted a pre-construction meeting on seventh September. What we came from that meeting, we handed it, we had it at United Community. What the architect proposed through D.R. Phillips, who's a contractor, and was also agreed upon by the USDA with the money, is they're going to find out what, how long the delay, because as all the Commissioners know, and everybody knows, the delay materials, vendors, how long is it going to take this materials? If it's going to take twelve, sixteen weeks, we're in the dead of winter, not the best time to be clearing off a site and trying to do training. So we're waiting to find out that timeline. If we can get it in into, in the timeline, the contract's only ninety-day contract, roughly anyway, we can get it, get it by, say, by December, earliest possible December, we'll go forward with it. If it's going to run into January, February, then we'll, we'll look to potentially delay this and not do a start date until January. Now, we'll have to work on the, the funding and the grant for the money with some of the other, the providers that provided the money, the USDA, obviously, and Dogwood that helped us with the money too. So that, that's just the, of the current, we're waiting to hear how that's going to look like, so, before they move forward to actually starting work. The next two is our cemetery and our recreation department building. The cemetery department, they did strip the topsoil up there. Obviously, we're starting the site work on that, it's about thirty-five percent complete, stripping it and bringing, we did a proof roll on it after they stripped it, sprayed everything, both sites really worked good on the proof roll, no problems there, they'll continue getting that site ready to put in concrete. The recreation department is, site work is about seventy-five percent complete, there's a structure they were delayed on getting, again, vendor issued, material issued, they have to put that structure in, there's a little bit of dress up on the site, and they've got to put gravel in, they're going, they're working close with clay, do the concrete. That was due to start last week, rain, and then, of course, the beginning of this week, rain, they haven't been able to start forming. Luckily, on the concrete side, I don't have a delay from COVID. I think my concrete guy's going to be able to do it. Luckily, my electrician didn't have to sling anything in the slab, otherwise I would have been delayed because there was a problem, my electrician. But the, the big issue that we just finding out, and I have an email, if you can see it, from the vendor, they were delayed, just like the steel for the elementary school gyms project, the steel for our mail buildings was delayed until, shortage in May or in June, so the, no later than date for our building, which was the end of this month, is going to move to November second. So basically, a month delay on the delivery of our two mail buildings. I asked Zach if that potentially moved to the right again. Right now, as, when that's coming from the actual, the factory, that's a pretty hard date, I'm holding into that November second. Is that disappointing? Yeah, it's disappointing. However, because of COVID and some of the delays on some of the other things, obviously, I'll have my concrete here, potentially, we won't have weather delays on the concrete anyway, and it'll be ready to build all of the time developed buildings coming here. That's the only bad part about those two buildings. If there's no questions on those, the, this is where we've really taken it with the office renovation. As everybody knows, the tragic loss of Jason Best, who was working with our construction crew, was there. So COVID went around with the different people that were on, different subs that were working on that. Both the construction crew, plumber crew had quarantines, the electrical crew had, also had COVID positive people, so the job is actually shut down right now. They worked a little bit on Friday, they hadn't been there the last couple days, and it's, it's basically been COVID. I should get an update tomorrow on where we stand. Right now, the project is about twenty-two percent complete, and the framing is about eighty-five percent complete, but just a little bit of the overhead, ceiling, I'll put the ceiling, and some other little minor things that need to be done. With the plumbing, the rough end plumbing is pretty much complete, I need to get with Commissioner now on some one issue that I want to talk to him about with the floor, and, which is the water, the water and the sand. With the plumbing, the rough end plumbing is pretty much complete. I need to get with the commissioner now on one issue that I want to talk to him about with the floor. And which is the water, the water in the sanitary unit. Electrical has started, like I said, and mechanical, we're working on getting one last item for that mechanical to present to the commissioners. We'll go from there. Again, unfortunately, it's, the bad thing about that too is, again, we fall back to the same thing that we've been talking about with treatments and shots, I just don't know how much it's going to affect all our projects moving forward as long as COVID is in, is in play with everything we're doing. If there's no questions on that, we'll move to middle school. It's showing twenty-eight percent complete. That one had a two month delay on material orders itself on that one. They are starting to do dig footers now finally because of the structures that they were waiting on to get here. So that one is slowly catching back, or trying to catch back up to their initial, their initial plan and their schedule. Then last, the last two projects, bottom of page. As you see, the Little Snowbird Bank remediation and the clearance snag. We're going to, we're putting those two projects together to go out as one, it's in the same area, makes sense. Probably get a better price doing them as one instead of two. They, basically the dot, it's a fifty percent design, but it's ninety-five percent complete. A fifty percent design just goes to the national, it's the resource center. Our resources for water and stuff outside, they have to approve the plan. It's a fifty percent set of plans, they come back with their markup, and then they come back with the actual final plan. So that trap has went to National Resources, or Natural Resource, excuse me. And then we're waiting on their review, and then since we get that back, we'll start the process of RFD for them to repair all that work out a little slower. That's, that has a lot to do with the bank falling away with Little Snowbird Road as you go up there. There's a couple of places where it's, the water has cut into it, it's real close. Also, the debris that's in the river, debris is destroying people's bridges. It's actually washing stuff out up there. So we're, we're going to be hopefully getting that project on as we get to the rest of the job too.
At the end of August of last year, we got funded for the first part in January, and then they came back and added, we got this one. I think we got there at the build, pretty on April, and everything happened in August. Actually, June and December, excuse me.
June and December. We got approved for another extension. I think with, because of the size of this, and there's basically debris cleaning and some still on site work, about two weeks at the most, I think we'll turn around for that, not sooner. That's all I have, if there's any questions.
Okay, give me the non-accounts report for the end of September. Go look on page twenty, you'll see that our cash balance for our general fund was eight, it was a total of eight million, one hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars. You'll notice that we are below this time last year by a hundred fifty million, or a hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. But that's because we paid two hundred ninety-one thousand for the stadium lots out of our fund balance. And we also paid for an ambulance this past month, so it did push our cash balance down. I have money sitting in our EMS billing account that I can transfer back into the general fund and finish that fund. And that's one reason we keep that fund, the EMS billing, that helps us fund the ambulances without having to find them. You'll also see that our couple projects, school couple project, American Rescue Act plan balance has had a change significantly. You'll see a change in the American Rescue Act balance in the next report for September, where we paid the premium, see that change. And you'll turn to page three. You'll see that our tax collections are about a, they're very healthy. They're over a hundred thousand dollars in collections over this time last year. We got current taxes of five hundred twenty thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars. Current taxes collected were twenty thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars, for a total of five hundred forty-one, two. And then our DMV was also healthier than this time last year for a little under sixty-four thousand dollars. So I was pleased with those numbers, that gave me all the ways to pay for the ambulance and these stadium lights. You'll see on page four that we collected so far in our real property taxes, one being four hundred twenty thousand dollars in our current levy. And DMV is a hundred twenty-one thousand. So we are on the plus side for our real property taxes of a hundred ninety-three thousand and ten, little hundred, eleven thousand for DMV. Our BTS taxes, our tax collection percentage is quite a bit healthier than this time last year. Twenty, a little over twenty percent, this time last year was seventeen. Our levy will increase, you'll see that in your discoveries, we got the discoveries for the utilities. So you'll see that number change for September. If I look on page six in the green, you'll see that our revenues for the month of August was one million, four hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars. Our expenditure for one million, eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars, which caused a deficit for the month of four hundred one thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars. And I'm like, huh, what happened? Well, there again, we paid for the school lights, and we also paid for the ambulance. We had some other expenditures, such as paid for the repairs on the sheriff's car, paying the sheriff's legal fees, and we, this time last year, we were, we weren't paying any twelve thousand dollars a month for the urgent care maintenance thing. So several expenditures that are new or different from this time last year. But if you look on the, kind of the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see that our revenues are about six hundred forty-two thousand better than this time last year. So we're holding our own, we've made some, we've done some good things with the money, and so we're still good as far as the help of our fund balance. If you look on page seven, you'll see our sales tax dropped just a tad between last month and this month, as well as last year versus this year. We got two hundred fifty-one thousand just the other day in sales tax. This time last year, we got close to two hundred sixty-two thousand. We're still in the black. We've gotten right at fifty-three thousand dollars more in sales tax this year over last year. So we're still doing very well. And again, that is not included at quarter cent. We have about twenty-four, five and a quarter cent just the other day. So that brings our grand total to the collections of the quarter cent for capital outlay of five hundred forty-six thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars. So we're still doing, we're averaging twenty-four, twenty-five thousand every nine on that quarter cent. So that's covering us in our projects. We have on our back taxes, since we began foreclosures, right at ten years ago, we collected four hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred eighty dollars in from the thirteen, from two thousand four, thirteen, fourteen, so we're close to our goal there. Any questions?
Maybe that quarter cent sales tax, that five forty-six, five eighty, that's the, that's always been collected since the tax.
That's correct, yes. And one, one other that I'm excited to report is that we paid our QZAD note off last Monday. Mr. Coe is really aware of that, I think you're a commissioner and county manager when that occurred. That was a fifteen-year note, that was one million, six hundred thirteen thousand dollars. Every year, we would put money in US Bank in a holding account, a little over eighty-four thousand dollars. It returned, as I said, last Monday. We had a little shortfall of six dollars and ninety-five cents. So the investment is well, for the most part, covered. We would have been ahead of the game had interest rates not fallen out the bottom, had it been. So that eighty-four thousand per year will be, will be able to use that toward our debt service on the middle. I was excited to get that off the books.
What was the QZAD for, something still?
Elementary school. On your budget, you should have eighty-four percent each department at this point. And all the departments are hanging at or right below the budget. We have a few that seem to be a little ahead, but it's all explainable. You know, there's our EMS, because we paid for the ambulance, and our special appropriations, because we made the payment on the lights. But all, for the most part, all of the departments are within budget, and the county as a whole is within budget. I'm happy to report that. I do have the budget amendment in heart copy form tonight for an amendment that the board approved last week. It would be SS Boarding, I was unable to attend it because I was in their isolation. But we did get two, basically allocations. One was from Vaya Health for twelve thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars to help with family reunification activities, and then twenty-eight hundred fourteen dollars from the state to help with COVID response. So this is a, this is an amendment that you approved, this needs signatures. That's all I have tonight.
Are you all good? I hope everybody's doing good. All right. I'm here to talk masks, obviously. The school board put the masks back on the kids, it's just ridiculous. So you're asking, well, what's that got to do with us, right? So I'm about to ask you something crazy. And it's not crazy to me, let's be straight to you. I want you guys to not fund the school that puts a mask on kids. I just, it's wrong, it's wrong in every way. The family fathers would never agree to put masks on kids. There's no science to back it up. There's no, there's nothing to gain by putting masks on kids. So if you guys kind of stood up and pushed them back and gave them a hard time, maybe the four wusses I'm going to call them, because I believe two of them are actually on the side of not having masks, but they're afraid. I'm telling nothing worse than a coward to me, I just can't stand them. I get around those people and I can't believe that these people are in elected office. It can't be a coward in elected office. I'm sure you all agree with me. Okay, so it's unconstitutional, oh, sorry, wrong glasses. It's unconstitutional, okay? God wouldn't do it, I'm in charge. All right? Are you guys aware of the mask science? If you're not, you got to write stuff in your inbox today and Mr. Wiggins over there fired right back at me on one of the things. But I'm going to push back. So what I want you to understand is what, when you go to look up science on masks, you know that it talks about droplets. It's always talking about, yeah, they're just talking about the droplets. Well, actually, we're talking about virus, okay? And yes, I agree, with the mask, the droplets are going over the mask. But it's a nice, warm, dark environment, right? If a virus is dying in there, I don't think it is. And I don't have my little cards, tonight, look for your inbox, I'm going to send you my little cards, I left them in my cart. And it's going to tell you some of the stuff that's in a mask after it was researched by a lab. People just sent their mask, their kids' mask off just to see what's in it. And everything that the hospitals don't like is in this mask, on these kids' masks. I can't even believe it myself, but there it is, they're getting games up for it. And I'm going to send you that little card. I wish it was here, because you'd be amazed at what that was, what's in a mask at the end of the day after a kid takes it off. Okay, I'm telling you to check the blue card, it's not funny. All right, do you know that the, the actual virus is aerosol, it's an aerosol virus? It's in a mask, here's a mask, okay, that's the hole. I hit that thing with a little pin, a little drop of ink off of an E-pin. That's the virus to the mask hole. And I got all the measurements and I sent this stuff to you, but really, let's just go with basic stuff. That's what it's like, okay? And it's aerosol. So if we look up in a, you know, when the sun's coming through, you know, in my house, it comes through the second floor and the first floor, I mean, dust is in the air and I can see it everywhere, and it's floating around. That's kind of how this virus is floating around. It's really that way, it's an aerosol virus. So how does it spread around and what's it doing? We're told six feet distancing and all these things, but listen, you know that dust is flying all over your house. I mean, it's going through three layers in my house. So an example to you is if I'm in a bathroom and I'm spraying my hair with hairspray, within less than a few seconds, my husband's hollering from the other room and he's saying, what is that smell in here? Well, it's my hairspray, babe. Okay, it's your hairspray, Hank, that stuff stinks. But what if it's the virus flying around like an aerosol? That means I'm standing here and you get your virus while I'm standing here talking because we probably have beds moving, and look at my arms flying. If I had the virus right now, I would be kicking it in the air, right? That's the truth, that's just the science of the whole thing. Okay, so the virus can slip through a mask simply and easily, right? So I'm going to go to a mask expert to talk to him because there's so much information coming from the other side that thinks masks are good. What are we going to do? Who are we going to listen to? Who's telling the dad on truth? That's what I want to know. Well, there's a man named Stephen Peck. He is an industrial hygienist, have you ever heard of such a guy? Apparently, you can't build a hospital without him. You know what I'm talking about, build a hospital? You can't build a hospital without an industrial hygienist. You know why? That's the top experts on PPE. They're the top experts on air quality, controls, all kinds of things, everything to do with even us working on here. Every doctor's office, every facility that does anything to do with medical has to have these people. So you know who I want to know? I want the top man in the country. Who is the top guy in the country? Stephen Petty. He's the top credential guy on PPE, and you know what he says? He says a lot of boring stuff, and you got this information in your inbox. Petty podcasts, they're horrible, and I swear it's so boring, you're going to go panic, really? But you know what, after he's done, you're going to know a lot about masks. And you know what you're going to know about? What is DHS standing on? What CDC documents is DHS standing on to put masks on kids? Don't you want to see them? I mean, is this board, is the school board? I mean, the school board kicks us out, we're not out of here. We got to wear a mask, they don't make, need provisions for that. So they don't care to hear this science, although it's always been in their inbox. What I want you to understand is when the four videos are watched, it's very simple. This man walks you through his science, the science of it all, and it doesn't ring true. These CDC documents are not standing on studies and data. I'm not kidding. I mean, I didn't even know that until I watched this thing, and I'm a research fanatic, and I did not know this. CDC is not standing on anything. No data, I mean, someone can make conclusions of this, of that. Show me your science. This man right here kind of come back at me on my JAMA, Journal of American Medical Association. He kind of came back on me and said, that's been debunked, that, that the pediatric people all come out and they said all this stuff. Why would JAMA put that off coming near to the government? Was that like an afterthought? They put that article out about masks and the poisoning inside that mask of the, of the carbon dioxide because it's real. They didn't do it for the farm, they didn't put that in there, and then they go and retract it? How often do they retract? What's their reason for it to retract it? Dale, you said that to me. You got to know, I love it, I got to tell you, I mean, I want to give you a hard time, but I have to, you don't know, nobody ever argues with me, and it bugs the crap out of me. Come at me with what you got, and you better come slick your doggone ducks in a robe because I'm afraid.
I want you gone.
I heard this all the way down.
I couldn't believe this.
People just thought, being here, they don't know what they're talking about.
At least you came back and all the stuff you're saying, I seen. But you should have come back with me. I was gonna give you a lesson today.
Well, I didn't have time to look at all kind of stuff. I did look at that. And it was retracted because there were, after the review, the people that wrote the article didn't have the facts and figured etc., etc. and back it up. So the Journal of American Medicine and Pediatrics retracted that article.
And what was your source is what I, and that's not.
Actually, I don't.
I'm sorry.
She wants to know what source.
I wanna know where you got that information so we can see what you see.
See, I got it off the Journal of American Medicine website.
The retractation?
Yeah, that.
You know, I see where it's from, right? What can you come from there? Yeah, but what I guess we're trying to say to you is when you, when you debate me, you have to put in, just like I did to you. I put in, well, I got my information. I need you to put it in me. I mean, I already seen it, so don't worry. I already seen what you're talking about. So what happens when something like this happens? There's, well, there was no study? The numbers didn't match up? Where, what have we got?
You like to go through it. I didn't remember. I said, I'm sorry.
Dale, you have to.
I put it up. It was kind of helping Mrs. Rex and I set paint on your faces, cut off the oxygen.
She's gonna, I'll just shut her up. So, so what you need to, what you need to understand, Dale, I love that you did that because I really can't hardly tell you how much. I just want somebody to respond. I wanna know if you agree and I want you to, if you don't agree, I don't have to have a problem with disagreeing at all. But you should copy and paste from whatever you're getting from. Stick it right back in with me. And now, buddy, I know where you got it, but I've already seen it online. And it doesn't matter. I stick with my, my story because I've seen so many videos and so much data on what's inside that mask that I already know. These, these are true statements. Are you trying to tell me you put a mask on when you didn't, when you called carbon dioxide? Is anybody in the, actually gonna tell me? Stand up, raise your hand. I didn't, I didn't breathe any carbon dioxide, Hank. That wasn't a problem to me at all. I didn't strain like a louse to get that air in, no? I only put a mask on twice. And the first time I put it on, that is exactly what happened to me. I breathed in my own air and that freaked me out. And I, I tried to breathe again. My husband says, "You're gonna have to be used to wearing these." And I said, "It'll be a cold day in that hot place where that happens." Because I'm gonna pass out. I can't breathe in that thing. You don't breathe in it, but you'll be used to it. Oh, no. No, I'm not getting used to this because I know where this comes from. I understand the whole concept of it and maybe some of you did. Maybe some of the people on the school board understand that there is a greater thing here than this cotton picking virus. That's what's, that's the truth. The virus is not the problem. We can get rid of the virus. And boy, I showed you my science on this stuff. I gotta get my glasses for it, recognize? So regardless of JAMA argument, you gotta give me something to go with, Dale. I wish you'd do it. I don't mind. I don't mind. So.
Yeah, you know what? When I get home, I'll probably find it.
Okay.
Send it to you.
Well, you'll probably find lots of it because I've already seen it and there's a lot of that. Everybody's trying to tell me the JAMA articles over there. But I'm telling you, the Journal of American Medical Association wouldn't have put it in there. It wouldn't have passed the smell test unless it was a legit study. And in the end, there's pressure. And anyone that thinks that there's not pressure to shut up about what's going on, they're crazy. There's pressure to shut up and listen. Don't argue with who's telling you what's going on. You have to just take your science and shut it, square up your butt and eat. That's what it's like. It's like people just think I'm supposed to lie. Okay, Dutch study. Pecky, I just mentioned Pecky, right? Pecky says, really, the only study out there that's legit to him is the Dutch study. You know what I mean? People have told me the Dutch study has been debunked. How come so many studies are being debunked? How are they debunked? Did this actually happen on you? Yeah, we really did that study. Yeah, that's really what the data says. Well, then why is it debunked? It's actually this study, but they don't like it, so we take it off. And if anybody thinks that and what's going on, they're just crazy. So I want you to know about two people because I want you to know when you go to your inbox what it means. The Pecky Podcasts are obviously boring, but please listen to Christine Kelly because she's gonna spend five minutes and she's gonna give you the 411. And it's the cutest video on that. She's standing in front of a school board with the sweetest little waves and she gets telling that school board how it is. You know who she is? She's an occupational, environmental, industrial hygienist. Now, that's a word. Man, that's a word, huh? That's her credentials. Their credentials just between her and Pecky. Her and Pecky, I wish I could have got those to you today. But I, my words, my work, it's like in my documents. But you know what? The credentials between Pecky and this Christine Kelly is literally a full page. They are certified in every cotton picking thing. No hospital can be built without these people consulting. They are the PPE experts. You know what she tells the school board? It's childish to put a mask on a kid. You know what? She's court credentialed. She goes into court. She wins every mask case. Now, this one must be stupid or the rest of us are stupid. Somebody's got to be stupid about the mask and somebody's got to be smart about the mask. I don't know. Two different things are said, but I just know when I put it on my head. So I told you to watch the videos, the four videos, 12 to 17 minutes. I gotta make sure I let you know how long, so you'll actually go look at it. 12 to 17 minutes, four videos. Okay, so I'm gonna go to my common sense. You know the box, you know the box, the mask box? Do you know what says it doesn't protect from virus? You'd have that if I could open a dagnum Word document on there. You'd have that in your inbox, but I believe it's, it's pretty common knowledge.
Well, the box has said that when it's first started, but guess what the box has told you?
Wait, doesn't matter. That's what the box has said and I'll give you the copy. It seems like I get these Word documents over. But these are my common sense. The, the mask box says it won't protect from virus. I'm done anyway. The manufacturer said it. But I'm gonna give you my common sense saying, "I gave this to the board back in June over at the school." I thought it was a killer. I mean, I don't really think, I thought it was the end of this masking. You're gonna love this. When we had our, our pandemic at the height of it, all crazy. Didn't New York pretty much shut down? I mean, honest to God, I don't think there were people on the streets. They shut down that, they followed all the rules that that's in it and these people cut out the chest alphabet. And I don't want people to listen to Alphabet News, you may not know this. If you listen to Alphabet News, you may not know anything I'm talking about. But if you get to the right resources and you go and you start to get where information is given on, you will find out South Dakota didn't close down during the pandemic. They didn't shut down, huh? Just went to school. Business went on as usual. Okay, they didn't, what happened? There should be dead bodies on there. Every kid in school should have this sickness and their staff and their teachers and all them, school systems should have it too. But you know what? And you know what? I thought a whole people locked down or could die. I swear, I would bet on that. But you know what it found out? When it all cleared? When everything cleared, the same infections, the same hospitalization, the same deaths, pretty much the same. Now, obviously, New York's bigger, but I'm talking for caption. These people shut down, don't shut down. We got the same numbers. Why are we shutting down? Why aren't we masking? Why aren't we putting masks on kids? Is this, does any of this logic make any sense to anybody? No. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying this. Okay, but I'm saying as a school board, I don't know what y'all think. I don't know. I want you to stop funding this school. Okay. Okay, I'm talking about some crazy, and you guys get ready for this. We're about to wrap up and get crazy with you. There's two groups, okay? There's this conglomerate of people that are doctors and nurses and politicians and scientists and, and people and experts and blah, blah, blah. And you know what they are? They're my camp on the left, I call them. Everything's two camps with me. On the left is Satan's camp. Satan, I said. Okay, I'm talking Satan. People either believe it or they don't, but I'm gonna tell you, Satan's cotton picking real and he's operating in this left camp. And there's a whole lot of people over here and every death and destruction that has happened since this virus started in this country belongs in that camp. Now, you might say, well, what about God's camp over here? What we do? We have a camp over here with doctors and nurses and people and specialists. And you know what? They have 99 and 100% success rate with the COVID virus. Do you know these people? Do you know any of their data? Do they have science and facts? I just told you, CDC doesn't have one study. Pecky is like, you know, I'm trying to find data. I wanna have data on this. Where's the data? This is my opinion. These are our conclusions. From what? From what? I'm not stupid. I know, and I don't see data here. I understand. Somebody's giving an opinion and that's fine. You haven't educated yet. Your hypothesis works for me. Except where's the data? Where you got all these things? Who are we listening to? And see, Pecky can give you his references. I can give you my references. Dale didn't have any. But I've got them. And I made, now you, I bring you my stuff. I'm about to start pissing, I think. So anyway, here you have this, this camp where everybody is living. And you know what happened to Hank back in February? I got the doll on the road. Who thought I would get the virus? I don't get sick. I'm a natural person. I don't have to take medications. I take nut medications. And I got the cotton picking virus. And I mean, I can just get it a little bit. I said, woo, I got it. So I went over to Lululemon with them there. They tested me and said, "Yeah, you got it." And this guy comes up, I can see his little eyes. And then, and I'm sitting there sick as a dog, really. I barely can get in the truck. And he says, "Well, it gives way to someone to get here that in the next couple of days, you're either gonna get a lung problem and have to go in the hospital or you're gonna be better." And I'm like, "Nothing happening." But I said to him, "Well, why don't you just give me a prescription of hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin?" And he said, "It doesn't work." I mean, I said, I started laughing. I really, I was so sick. It's not really funny that, that he said it. It's funny as an ironic because I do so much research. I know these case studies in the hospitals and doctors and these people are all women over here. What's happening in your city? What's happening in your household? We got people dying? We got family and friends that died and listened to those people over there? They sent me the free call. It gave me nothing that I asked for. I mean, my God, I couldn't believe they did that. Well, that's fine. So I called my sister. My husband pulled over the bike boys. Get the heck over there the bike boys. Let's pull over. I gotta call my sister. Soon, find me ivermectin and find it for me now because I'm sick as crap. I'm bad sick. I can't hardly get anything out of the truck. That's crazy, right? But she found it. So you know what? My husband went and picked it up. Let me tell you what it was. Are you ready? Bet you can guess. I took horse ivermectin. No problem. Thank God. Because you know what happened that night? I sure feeling better. I sure feeling better on one story. I have to give you one more story. I got lots of stories like this about how a horse, pig and sheep are ivermectin. And I got the real ivermectin and the real, I got stories all day long about people living. And not people I don't know, people I know. And you know what? I gotta tell you the one guy. If I mention these people's names, all of you will know. And this guy says, "He had to bring me his, his pig and sheep's son for someone else that wanted it and it had to be others that connection." And so he walks up and he lays me this thing. And I take it from him and he hasn't said five words to me in one time ever in his life. And he looked at me and he said, "I take it." And about 15 minutes later, I felt good. I mean, Hank, I really felt good. And I'm like, "Who are you? I mean, I never heard you talk with such..." And he showed real excitement and everything. His wife wasn't better yet. He said, "Huh? Momma's ain't better yet, but she feels better." So she's taking the sheep and the pig thing. I could go on and on with the people that did that. They wouldn't give it to me at Lululemon. I could have died. They wouldn't have cared. They don't care. They take you to that hospital. Do you know they got a recipe over there at the hospital that'll kill you, break your dead? How many people have to die in this country? How many before we all say, "There's something crazy going on up in here"? This hellhole over here in the left camp is killing people. And these people over here and this camp ain't. Why aren't we listening to these people? Why isn't the school board listening? Why aren't you people listening? You're walking around with that mask on. You think that mask protects you? I just proved to you that, I mean, I could be standing right here and my aerosol virus could hit you, although I'm not. Like I said, I've had it. I'm not got the stupid thing. If you believe what the news is telling you, you're a damn fool.
Oh, now they believe the health department, so now they wanna coerce everybody.
So I want you to understand. I want you to understand.
This is crazy.
Stop funding people that are playing this vicious game. Grow up here. Stand up and say, "No, you're not getting any of the money from the cotton picking county here because you got masks on kids and these kids live to the tune of 99.997. That's CDC." Isn't CDC number good enough for anybody? We're gonna take them over and we're gonna jab them. You know what VAR says? VAR's talks about all these deaths. You wanna know what's going on with the deaths? It's only 1%. What's in the VAR's numbers is only 1%. They have it on their own website. That's from the Harvard study back in the early 2000s that said only, only 1% is reported. Listen. How many people are gonna die? And you guys are sitting in here in these positions of power and you're gonna stand up and start pushing. How about we put hydroxychloroquine on the streets? You got, you got, we're gonna contact, what do you call that, contact tracing? We're gonna do that and we're gonna start giving people everything as a prophylactic. That's what this group of hundreds and thousands of people that live, that's what they're doing. We're gonna ignore these doctors, the, the media, the cotton picking, um, um, social media, all delete their, they delete their data. If you're so sure they're wrong, why are you deleting their data? Because perhaps you don't have any. I did not know that CDC didn't have data until I read the issue of those papers. So what do you think? Now, vaccines are given out on the school property. To kids, they do have to get parental permission. I don't wanna act like they're just doing crazy stuff. They do it, but why is it sitting over there intimidating and coercing? Why are we giving them? These people don't care. Those four people up there, God bless Jonathan, don't let me forget to praise Jonathan. The only one in this whole Dade County, he stood up. He stood up and said, "No, I'm not putting a mask on a kid." And those other four people stood up and said, "Yeah, well, one sat there without a mask on." Do you understand optics? She's not wearing a mask and she putting on the kids? What kind of freak? I'm so pissed. I wanna discuss. I just want you to know, I give this to the kids. I have a dream life at home. I don't have to come in here. I never had to come in here. The only reason I do it is because God told me to. And you better stop supporting this crazy ass stuff going on. You better stop supporting it. I respect all you guys. You're so much more than that school board will ever be. They are ridiculous over there and you guys are not. And I'm yelling at you like I would have yelled at them and I'm sorry. But please consider what I've said. Please look at my science. The world is turned upside down because people won't listen to the truth. Satan is real, man, and his camp is killing. God is real and his camp is life. Please help me. Help me. Help me, please. I don't know what else to say. I'm gonna shut up. Close it down. I'm sorry I yelled at you.